Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the Carson City Consolidated Municipal Planning Commission, open for September 25, 2024. And I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Chair Preston.
Here.
Vice Chair Lloyd.
Commissioner Borders.
Here.
Commissioner DeChristopher.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Kilgore. Commissioner Cron.
Here.
Quirms present.
Thank you. I'd like to open the, have the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lloyd, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to open this up for public comment. The public is invited this time to comment and discuss any topic that's relative, relevant to or within the authority of this public body. We are, you are limited to three minutes. And come on up. And please sign in. I don't see a signature.
Denny French, Carson City. Thank you, Chair and Board. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to fill my day with unusual events for myself, going in to get a car as oil's changed at Capital Auto. I walked from there and looked at the downtown and took it in as far as the sights and the sounds and the smells and the tastes that I could pick up from different restaurants. The smell is really part of your taste project, so I sort of tasted the town a little. And then I sat down and listened to areas of traffic and watched people's movements and all that, and I'm going, geez, I don't want to see anything over four stories high for several reasons. I was looking at books today, and I only had a few minutes, but I found five books in very short time that relate to cities that are planning with the consideration of exhaust from cities, noise from cities, heat from cities, and the other factors that we all have is the air from cities. So those types of things and considering things like the wind patterns, considering the location of buildings and their heights as far as shading and heating, all those things. And in 10 minutes, I found five books, and I'd love to explore more. But I couldn't get a copy of those books because their machine was down as far as copying, so I can't share that with you. But it's fairly easy to find if you put up developmental considerations and concerns and relating to mediating those or mediating or taking care of those. But the main thing was that I appreciated the downtown. I got a chance just to sit and watch and listen, and it took a while to find me a place that I could sit that wasn't too cool or too hot. So I ended up sitting in an area that probably had me looking like they needed to check on me, but I sat in a nice, comfortable place. And I do want to suggest that anything we build now, we'll be looking at in 50 years saying, oh, those are historical sites. Do we really want to do something now that we'll be embarrassed at if we're still alive in 50 years? Will we be building things so that if they are well thought out and considered, are they going to be with the building materials that will sustain them through our weather changes and such like that, including the individuals inside and out of it? Are we going to put up things like totally against that parking structure that was considered? And I want to make it known why. It is just, it's horrific to me to have something planted right up to the street side except for a bit of room for a tree or two, and then sidewalk, asphalt to sidewalk to asphalt and cement or as cement, excuse me. But so my thing is that unless we consider our environment, we're not going to have this environment long. We're already dealing with smoke from fires that come into the valley by air and breezes. Why do we want to put things in the valley that are developing those things readily and on a regular basis? So all those things into consideration. I appreciate the effort you do. Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Seeing none, I'd like to go on to five for possible action. The approval minutes for August 28, 2024.
Madam Chair, I'll move.
Okay.
All right. I move to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission minutes of Wednesday, August 28, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, meeting items. Six A, ZA 2020 dash 001, for possible action discussion, possible action regarding a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding a comprehensive framework of proposal of mandatory revisions to the provisions contained in Title 18 and Title 18 Appendix of the Carson City Municipal Code, CCMC, which governs zoning and the Carson City Development Standards, CCDC, in Carson City. Hope.
Thank you. Procedurally, I'm going to suggest that we look at the development standards and the table of permitted uses first. I'm going to suggest that we take a break from this item, put a bookmark in this item at 5:00, so you can do your regular business, and then resume this item after you've completed that regular business. That said, I'm curious if you'd be interested in public comment before the staff speaks so that we understand the scope of public comment as we deliberate the development standards. On the development standards, you have a memo from Stephen Potte, the head of Development Engineering, in response to some of the public comments you received at your meeting on the 16th. You also have a memo from me that tries to reflect the input that we received on the 16th. So I feel like we kind of vetted that, and it would be good to hear public comment before we kind of close the door on that. And then, and then see how far we get with the table of permitted uses. So if the Chair, if that works for the Chair, that would be my suggestion. Otherwise, I'll just go ahead.
Okay, yeah, let's open it up to public comment.
I guess I touched on a little bit of the situation on the comprehensive framework. The process seemed to be very open. I think the only thing that I might say is that the public comment in any, for any subject, really, if you could bring up that there is, even if, if the people say, could you just say, I put in, if you could take a few minutes to say, this person was this, or this person put comment here, if you could say how many or such. I know we used surveys and we used counts on other things, and in this case, I think there was quite a bit of comment on this. It's a big area. I thought you took a great deal of time yourselves individually, and I appreciated that, but it's so big, we could use more time as individuals to review it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Seeing none.
Okay, so yeah, I'd like to go to the development standards, and I'll call on Stephen Potte to kind of walk you through his memo first, which his memo was included with the late material, and I believe it's primarily in response to the written comments from Tom Grundy.
Stephen Potte, for the record, in Development Engineering. So yeah, I can go through this item by item. So starting off, we got 15.1.1. So in this section, the DA had removed some wording that would make the bond based on staff's estimate rather than the applicant's consultant's engineer's estimate. So that's just putting it back to the standard that we do for subdivisions. So I feel like that one's pretty straightforward. In Part C, we removed main extensions and replaced that with system improvements. The reason for that is that a main extension isn't always the best solution when there's capacity issues or maybe other infrastructure that could help out there. Section F, instead of calling out extending laterals to the edge of the right-of-way, that says, as shown in applicable standard details. And the reason for that is there isn't always a public utility easement, and if there is one, we want to go into that public utility easement, but if there's not, then it would just go to the edge of the right-of-way. So that covers more scenarios with fewer words there. Okay, so here, we're talking about private sewer lines, sewer and water lines. And really, the, the reason for adding this section was that we had in the city private water and sewer lines that were getting installed, and they were being required to meet the requirements for a city main. And so this is just adding clarification that if it's, if it's private, it only has to meet the requirements of the applicable codes, fire code and the building code. However, there are instances where it would still have to meet city requirements. So that would be if it's a single check valve, which is when you have a water main that's just for fire hydrants. And then we're also calling out separation requirements. So either there's a meter at the property line or some sort of backflow preventer at the property line, which delineates where it goes from public to private. 15.3.1B, really just clearing up the, the correct acronyms for the water pipe material. E is consistent with the other changes that the DA made, switching utilities department to the Department of Public Works. Valves, here, the standard was calling out for valves at the end of a main. Really, the, the reason for this change is, a change is in the technology. So it used to be that you just pour a slug of concrete at the end of it. Now you can actually restrain the valve, but it's a little more complicated that you have to restrain it further back on the main. So making sure that, that that's clear in here. In the subsection I, changed the, the name of the standard detail and changed the location of that to the, the property line. In subsection Q, that's a, a part that was added by the, the DA, and they referenced a standard that doesn't exist. So we just put that back on the applicant's engineer to calculate how the restraints are installed. Again, here, we're referencing an existing definition in the Nevada Administrative Code rather than having an ambiguous definition of our own, just defaulting to what's already defined by the state. And then subsection three, deleting this section about having the city do the testing. I think that's just from a, a time when the city actually had the staffing to be able to carry that out. That's, that's not the case now. We don't have the ability to go do this testing for people, so wanted to remove that. Then finally, in section 19.6.4, we removed just the words "and" signed because according to state law, an engineer does not have to sign record drawings. So just wanted to be consistent there.
Okay, I would suggest that if there's any questions or concerns about the memo, maybe we talk about that now, and then I'll go through the memo I wrote.
Okay, any questions in regards to this? Yes, Commissioner Cron.
Nope, sir.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Borders.
Stephen, thank you for doing this, but I guess my question is, has, has the DA's office reviewed your memo?
Not yet, no.
Okay. So are we subject to some pushback?
Procedurally, I've discussed in quite detail with the DA's office procedurally how this is all working. So what is happening today is you are conducting a public hearing on Title 18 and Title 18 Appendix for the proposed changes. You have the substance of the changes. You don't have it in ordinance form. Then what will happen is you will make a recommendation, and if we use my memo as an example, you could technically have a motion that says, we move to approve the proposed changes to the development standards with the changes in the memo from the Community Development Director dated September 4, including numbers, and that's why I numbered them, so you could articulate them really easily. We will then bring forward your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The DA's office will not rewrite anything between now and the Board of Supervisors meeting. The Board of Supervisors will be advised substantively what your recommendation is, and if they agree with your recommendation between introduction and adoption, the DA's office will make those modifications.
Commissioner Lloyd.
On, thank you for writing this, on 15.1.1C, no, A, where you changed, where you added in engineer's cost estimate, I think it would be good to clarify what engineer. I'm clear what engineer, but I think there just could be a question of what engineer? Like the owner, builder's engineer, or the city's engineer?
Okay, and hope let's go forward.
Okay, you have a memo from me dated September 24, 2024. In this memo, I tried to articulate what I heard was the consensus from your workshop on September 16. I called out the page numbers on these to make it easier, but just going through very briefly, item number one was an, an observation, I think Commissioner Cron made, that there was a requirement for parking lot lighting, and he questioned whether that made sense at a trailhead parking lot and so on and so forth. So I've included language that says that the director has the authority to waive the requirement for parking in a parking lot upon finding that the operation does not operate between dusk and dawn. And I believe our parks don't operate between dusk and dawn, so to address that concern. On page 15, you received input from Rich Perry regarding accessory dwelling units, and you seem to agree with what he said, so I have provided the wording as he provided it. On page 21, there was discussion about if somebody received consideration, which really what, what that section was talking about was a payment. So, and I need to remind myself what that section was about, but so instead of using the word consideration, I changed it to compensation because essentially that's what was meant. Let me just remind myself what that section was.
Oh, that was correct.
Oh, that was correct. Okay, good. Yeah, it was a word choice question about bed and breakfast. Okay, on page 24, we talked about personal storage, and it's weird because we have outdoor storage and personal storage. And personal storage, we talked about the U-Haul facility on State Street, and that's interior storage. But when you think about personal storage, you think about rolling up the garage door and putting your padlock on. And so to sort of start changing the thought process from personal storage to the concept of interior storage and, and what we see at Kmart, that's interior storage versus exterior storage or outside storage. So I'm suggesting that references to personal storage be personal storage slash interior storage. And then, you know, incrementally, we maybe can lose the title personal storage, but I think it's so entrenched, we can't just eliminate it. On page 28, it was just an awkward sentence, I think, and so just rewriting that sentence to provide some clarity, that was at the very top of the page concerning metal storage units. On page 28, also, two C, changing the special use permit for a storage container. Right now, if the storage container is more than 90 days, it, in the commercial or public zoning, it needs a special use permit, and changing that to an administrative permit, so it goes to the hearings officer as opposed to the planning commission. Let's see, on page 28 as well, talking about the authority to, the director can authorize the stacking of the metal containers when the metal containers are equipped as opposed to a storage facility, and that would address the situation that you're currently reviewing with the folks who provide equipment to different construction sites. On page 38, there's a, there's all sorts of performance standards for youth recreation facilities, and we weren't really sure why those existed, so I'm suggesting the elimination of that section. On page 40 and page 42, one talks about multifamily development, the other talks about residential development in non-residential zoning districts. Under parking, it calls out two parking spaces per dwelling, but also calls out refer to Division 2. I think it should just refer you to Division 2, which is the parking standards, and it doesn't have to say two spaces because sometimes it's not two spaces. Sometimes it's 2.5 spaces because you don't have on-street parking, or it's like one space, I think, because it's over a 55 community, and so if you have that situation. So just eliminate the reference to the two spaces per dwelling unit. On page 51, there was concern that parking was kind of going over the sidewalk, compromising the width of a sidewalk. So just adding a sentence that parking should be designed so as to not compromise the width of the onsite sidewalks. Page 77 to 113, just to clarify, we're removing those pages of landscape details. Page 115, we need to retype the owner-maintenance agreement because it appears to have been scanned in, and it's not clear. Page 192, remove, that's in the downtown mixed-use zoning district, remove the permitted use table, and that way you'll default to the one table that we have for the use table. Page 214 to 217, those are graphics about the height of a building in the downtown mixed use. And what you'll see is the building height, there can be eight stories. What we talked about on the 16th is that I would reach out to the fire chief to determine what height his apparatus could serve. He advised his apparatus can serve up to six stories, and so I recommended that we say the maximum height is six stories. You all did not necessarily settle on that at the meeting on the 16th, which is why there's a question mark after that. I just said I would get that data point. On page 226, there was, that was just some awkward wording, so we reworded it just to say the city engineer may allow the use of financial instruments to secure for incomplete improvements prior to occupancy. It doesn't change the meaning, it's just meant to clarify. And page 228H, it had said only 25% of the seed mix, I think this was hillside development, had to be pollinator friendly, and that should have been 50%, so we're adjusting that to 50%. So with the exception of the building height, which I put as a placeholder here for you to discuss, I think this captures your comments from the 16th, and I'm happy, I think now's a good time to have a discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Borders.
I'm sorry. When we talk about the, quote, Rich Perry amendments, this is for ADUs, but there's also a section that we have in, in there for auxiliary buildings or secondary buildings. Would this apply to them also, or would we have to add it to that? Or, and, and the reason I'm, I'm saying that is primarily because you're, we're going to see in these larger lots, we're going to see auxiliary dwelling units, which is important, but they can also, they have, if, if an HOA or CCRs have different sideyard setbacks from the city's minimum requirement to build a storage shed or whatever it is, and we've redone the square footage, so it, it's going to be a pretty big building by the time somebody decides to do it. But I would like to see if there's a way we can make that coincide also.
Sure, and the accessory buildings are addressed in 1805, and so that's in Title 18 versus 18 Appendix. So, but we can certainly include parallel language for accessory buildings.
Okay, thank you. Good job, by the way.
Any further comment from the Commissioners?
For the benefit of the record, Commissioner Brooks has joined the meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks, do you have any further information, any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Ma'am Chair.
Hope, I have one other question for you. On item number 15, I think we need to take some time as the Commission and go through the probably six or eight different scenarios that are there, and, and using the six, six stories as a maximum, maybe we need to reassign some of those others also, or at least talk about it so that we've, we've covered the whole gamut.
Sure, and that would be a good time to do that if you want, start on page 214.
Okay.
Mr. Borders, can we share your book? Okay, and Commissioner Cron.
Yeah, I, Hope's memo again was very helpful for me as well. I was able to go back and cross-check my notes against what she produced for us here. It did generate a couple more thoughts on a couple other pages through the document, so I didn't know when would be appropriate time to share those. If we wish to go after the height of these buildings now, that's perfectly fine. I just have a couple additional, nothing significant, but just wanted to bring them up.
And if we can put those on hold, that'd be great if we could go to discuss the building heights.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. I just, just wanted to make sure you were aware that I have a few comments.
Not a problem. I'll remember you, remind me if I forget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As you discuss height, I do want to remind this Commission that we do right now, we have actually a really good rule in Carson City, and it's really unusual to have. And what it says is that the Commission has the authority to allow additional height with a special use permit. So you may want to, as you look at this, consider the fact that you may want to create a maximum by right reckon, and in acknowledgement that could go taller with the special use permit because it may be one size doesn't work everywhere.
And, and I would guess also, hope that if any of the properties that are in existence now, if we change this height requirement and they did no longer comply, that they would be legal, non-conforming.
Correct.
I'm thinking primarily the Orange B House, but there's some others I can think of.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was giving that consideration, and thank you, Hope, for saying that about utilizing the SUP for that purpose. Just to get the party started, I walk that area one to two times a day and living in that neighborhood, and I really like the idea of sticking with four stories. The reason I say that is having lived in other towns that had higher limits as their standard, you ended up with a lot of building that instead of making it interesting, everybody wanted to max out because vertical is cheaper than horizontal. And so you ended up with a very city, excuse me, cityscape type looking environment. And I think one of the things that makes Carson City unique, and we heard it during the tour, they like the history, they like the small-town feel, and I think trying, encouraging something higher than that as a standard is unacceptable would be putting us, taking us away from that. And the other reason being that the Capitol was something that came up frequently. And the other reason being that the capital was something that came up frequently, and we've seen that happen before, where cities allow more height, and it minimizes the capital complex area. So for that reason, I'm encouraging us to look at four floors.
And, and my question would be, is that people can extend the ceiling heights considerably and call it a four. So have we considered actually putting an actual height limit on it as opposed to a number?
If you look on page 214, you'll see it includes both. For example, it says eight-story and 95-foot max, and then it shows a different one, 36-foot max, three-story.
That's an eight or a nine-foot room with a one-foot, one-and-a-half-foot floor.
So you can certainly either, I, I agree with your comment, Chair. And I actually cringe when I hear people say, oh, let's limit it to one story, because like you said, you can have these big cathedral ceilings, and that doesn't give you assurance of what your height will be. It can still be very tall, but one story with, say, a loft or something, that's not a second story. So I think it's important to speak in both, using both measures.
So when the fire department talked about six floors, what were they talking about maximum height?
I don't believe he gave me feet, is my, my recollection.
That was my question.
Mr. Borders?
In looking at, at the, there's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight or nine different categories in this, in this document. I think, I don't have a problem at all with the four stories, just leaving it at four stories. However, on the, on the Curry side, on the west side, I think we ought to go down to three. There's two sections between Curry, Curry Second Street to John and Second Street to Ninth. And those areas, you know, that's our transition area. I just, I just can't see a four-story building over there. And the other area that I'm concerned a little bit about is, is our Carson Street East to the Plaza. We do have, there's an SUP, I think, that we've approved, and it's a five-story building. The apartment complex back there.
Oh, on William Street.
Yeah. I thought it was five-story. It has a parking garage and four stories.
Or has that, has that one expired?
Are you thinking of the one behind Reds 395?
Right.
That expired across from the Bryant Building?
No, no, I'm talking to the one just north of the Nugget.
The one by, right, that's on William and Washington and Stewart, okay.
If memory serves, that is three stories. The special use permit was applied for, for an alternative standard to the downtown mixed-use standards.
Okay, okay. Well, in that case, I don't have a problem with four stories. But I do, I do, would like to consider, on the Curry Street side, making it three. I just think on that side, you know, you've already got the Orange B House, and I, I don't know that we need anything bigger over there. And that would simplify this whole section.
And do you want to allow the provision for the special use permit?
Okay, any further discussion? How do you feel about that, Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks?
I, I'm burdened by not having the documents in front of me, so I apologize if my questions are basic. The height restriction is for both commercial and residential development?
Correct. It's the downtown development standard, so it's, it's the zoning district, and that zoning district allows for both residential and non-residential.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was my only question. The proposal is, from what, to what number of feet? Again, I apologize, I don't have the documentation.
I think what I'm hearing is that along Carson Street, the recommendation is to go from eight stories and a 95-foot maximum to four stories. And let's just say we'll take half of the 95, so that would be about 48-ish feet. And then on Curry Street, to limit it to three stories, which would be about 36 feet.
And special use permit would all, to go higher? Or you need special use permit to, to get to those heights that you just mentioned?
As the discussion's been had, it would be four-story by right along Carson Street and three-story by right along Curry, and a special use permit if you went taller.
Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd?
I, if we, are we allowed to restrict a, like a request for the special use permit?
I don't understand the question.
So, I mean, I like that idea. And I mean, obviously, they could bring whatever to the planning commission or to staff, and we could then vote on that. But I think that I like the idea of not putting our public safety in a position where they can't save people if something happens. So can we put a restriction on, they can't bring something before us where our fire department can't serve this, that situation?
Understood. I don't think it's going to be necessary, because when you look at the findings of fact for a special use permit, you're going to have the findings of fact relative to public safety, you're going to have findings of fact relative to fire access. So I think within those fi, findings of fact, you'll be able to consider that. For example, if someone came in today and said, we want to build a 20-story building, and we're applying for a special use permit for a 20-story building, you, we would go to the fire marshal and solicit input. He would have to take into account the limitations of any apparatus he had or has, and he would comment accordingly. So whether you're talking six stories or 20 stories, if it's a special use permit, it's being routed to our fire department for review and comment based on the findings of fact.
Okay. My question is, if we put the height restriction on, we are, are we going to be eliminating this staggering? Because I think the staggering of stories actually adds to the aesthetic instead of building a bunch of boxes?
This actually came out of the master plan. So I think you can certainly have that conversation as, under the master plan discussion, whether you want that. Right now, you don't start staggering until you get past the three feet. And to the best of my knowledge, and Heather may have different, different memories on this, but the planning commission has been granting a special use permit to waive the requirement for step backs. When we get requests in the downtown, what we've been receiving is a request to go straight and not to have to step it back. It's been a burden to the developer, and the planning commission has approved those. I don't, I'll ask Heather Ferris if she's had a different observation on that.
I agree with Hope, that's generally what you guys have seen. The commission has, I think, considered one where the step backs were reduced, so they weren't as great as they are required to be. But we've also seen some that are just, you know, straight with no step backs.
So I think we can certainly, if at the four-story mark, you want to make sure we include the step back, we can certainly write that in. When you look at the buildings along the downtown corridor, they, they tend to be straight. They tend not to step back from the, from the, the front facade, I should say.
And we don't, okay, let's look about what we really do have. We have the Orange B House, which is an anomaly. Okay? We have the Old City Center Motel, which is five stories, was built 60 years ago, and it's not right against the sidewalk. We have four stories over at the 400 West King and at 901 Stewart Street, which is a city bu, a state building that is six stories. So the question is, is-
The courthouse is four stories.
Yeah.
With a, with a big facade, with a big-
But that had been built before we really had any kind of development standards, and we are not running them right against a sidewalk. So I think one of the things is, is I think one of the things that we'd like to do, and this is my feeling, and I don't know how my commissioners feel about this, but my feeling is, is I would like to see some of the aesthetics, even if it is an outdoor patio, balcony, lanai, something like that, rather than being straight-up blocks.
Understood. And we can certainly, right now, it looks like they start stepping back after three stories, so we can certainly include that. I'll also point out, in the downtown development standards, there are requirements for plazas, for public ar, for street, street materials like benches, things like that. So there are those amenities they have to provide when they do development in the downtown. So this does not cause those to go away. Those are still there in addition to, to this. But if the recommendation from this commission is that three-story maximum on Curry, four-story maximum on Carson with a step back after three stories, and both are eligible to apply for a special use permit to exceed the height limitation, I, I think that's, that's fine, that's whatever the commission wants.
I would throw out there that I think that a setback on Curry after two stories would even, I mean, I just, I don't think that Curry should have a bunch of blocks.
Okay, let's, let's find out. Commissioner Borders?
Yeah, one, one question first. It seems like we got these diagrams from the master plan and then wrote the ordinance around them. Now we're rewriting the ordinance, and we can change the master plan because we're working on it. So, you know, maybe we make it, you know, the, the KISS principle always works. If we make it a little simpler in our, on our planning document, then maybe in the master plan is where we can talk about some of the options that are there. I don't know if, if that's the right way to do it, or if we want to do it in Title 18 and then let the master plan pick up the difference. But if, I'm in favor of, of just being real simple and saying, you know, four stories, three stories on Curry Street, two stories, you got to come back one, and you can ask for an SUP, I think solves a lot of problems.
I think the other was, street that we did not look at was Stewart. And Stewart and, and Plaza area, because Stewart is actually facing, you know, we could take Stewart and make it the west side of Stewart and the east side of Stewart, too, if that's a desire. So, Commissioner Cron?
I, I certainly can appreciate the commission's desire with the setbacks and the boxy looks of things, but I also don't want to necessarily, and that's why maybe the special use, maybe that's the question to Hope, just from an architectural design perspective, under a special use permit, can, can they come forward, they being the applicant or the designer, come forward with other alternatives than what maybe we have for two stories up, one back, whatever?
Yes. Right now, how the code reads is if somebody wants to vary from the downtown development standards, they can do so with a special use permit. And it was using that tool is how the couple projects that have, excuse me, been approved in the downtown have been approved without the step back. They obtained the special use permit, so it's really case by case. On Stewart and Plaza, are you thinking the same as Curry? The three stories, step back after two story?
I'm thinking probably, because on Curry, what, on Stewart, what we have is we have library and archives, we've got the Senate Bill, the, the Senate building, yeah, we've got that Bank of America thing down there. I mean, we've got some really tall buildings that are already there. So my only question is though, too, is, I'm going to throw another one at you, it's going to be kind of a caveat, is do we have any say-so over the height of the state buildings that they're anticipating to put in where the old Kincaid went?
Yes, we do. If the state is building in Carson City and it's a use that was not established prior to 1971, we can take zoning jurisdiction.
Okay. And so if a building has been removed and it's not there, right?
I'm not sure which building you're talking about, which is why I gave you a generic answer.
The building I'm talking about is the Kincaid Building, which is over on the side of Valley? Yeah.
Right. So there's nothing there right now. So anything they build there, yes, we would take jurisdiction.
Because I think before, that was a six.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Cron?
No, you bring up a very good point. The state has a master plan throughout the, that they've approved. I don't know how quickly they're moving on it, but you're talking a, what, a three-story building there? I'm talking across north of, north of DMV. You have the Bryant Building.
That's six.
That's six-story? Okay, so that, now do we run into a problem if the state is planning to put in six? Because that was my understanding of the master plan. And I could be wrong, but that was my understanding, that they were going to take basically that footprint and that design and move it three or four, oops, sorry, three or four buildings north of where the Bryant Building is right now. And if we take jurisdiction, say, only four stories, and that's a larger building, are we not going to make the state very happy?
Well, I think one of the things with the state is they were going to originally do that, and they had plans to do that, and it began in like 2006. And that had not been done, and they found out that they actually had parking restrictions, because they were looking at putting Health and Human Services in there. And so that did not come through. So I don't think they're looking at that particular one on Rupert Stewart.
They still have the, they have the same ability for a special use.
Right. And I'll just point out, most of the state land is owned public, which means it would, any established use would require a special use permit. And what I have not heard this commission say, granted, you're still talking about it, is maximum four-story, end of story. What you're saying is four-story on Carson, three-story on Curry, they have the option of the special use permit to get increased height, and you're still talking about Stewart and Plaza. And I'm not sure if you're going four-story there, or, or what you're thinking there.
Okay. I'd like to kind of bring it back to the commissioners. As, let's put it out this way. Do you think that basically we're looking at three stories on Curry, four stories on Carson, four stories on Stewart? Because those are basically the main areas, correct? Are we missing any?
I would treat Plaza the same as Stewart.
Okay, Plaza?
And, because it's parallel to Stewart.
Okay. All right. And do you have any, how, how does the commission feel about that? Let's just try and leave-
Okay with me.
Okay with you? Okay with you?
I think that's a great solution.
Okay with you? Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Then I think that's where we would like to go, pretty well unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other discussion in regards to the staff report?
Yeah, I had a few things.
Okay. I'm sorry. See, I told you to remind me.
Oh, sorry. I was busy making notes. The, again, Hope, I- Where we go? Uh, Hope, again, I did appreciate the summary memo that you put together. I went through, I went through it page by page, just making sure that I, my notes matched your notes. I did have a couple of things I did spot that I did not bring up the first time, and I, I just want to, just for the record, possibly discuss them. There's a couple of things that we may want to change, but the first one I have, the first question I have for you is on page 10 regarding lighting. You've, the, the proposal is to take out the terms dark sky friendly as well as dark sky association. It seems like you're going to a performance-based standard there versus, you know, because I know we use that term up here all the time. And so I was just curious if you would explain to me why that was being taken out, so.
Actually, I'm a little glad you brought up lighting, because I've had a couple of meetings on lighting since the 16th. So I've met with the Visitors Bureau, I've met with the head of the observatory, and I've actually talked to a woman at State, I think she's State Parks, and she's going to oversee the State Dark Sky or Starry Sky Committee or Ordinance or something. Anyhow, so Vis, the Visitors Bureau is actually pursuing a state designation that's comparable to the international designation for dark sky community, and I can't remember the exact title of it. And so we met with the observatory to kind of get input from them. And so we met with the observatory to kind of get input from them on dark sky, and then I sent the ordinance to the woman at the State and asked her to review it to make sure there was nothing in our, our proposed ordinance that would cause us not to be eligible for the designation. Also, curiously, at the Visitors Bureau, Lydia told me Boulder City has the designation. And so, right, so I called Boulder City and I said, you know, I'm online, I'm looking for your lighting regulations, I can't find them. They said, we don't have any. We only regulate street lights. I'm like, how'd you get this designation? You don't even control private lighting on private property, but they don't. So anyhow, so I guess my comment is, I think the lighting section has been verbose. It's really in-depth. I think it was probably, we took the international dark sky standards and put it in the ordinance, and I think this is just a more functional part, way to approach lighting that's easier on the staff while still accommodating the dark sky compliant lighting standard. And again, I hope to have the input from the State to verify that this doesn't compromise a designation locally, but I suspect it won't since Boulder City doesn't even regulate lighting.
Wow. Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I probably got four comments here.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is on page 30, it was with our street vendors. We had a discussion about food trucks. I don't know where we ended up with that.
Right, and I'm not ready to take on food trucks.
Okay.
I'm going to go with the keep it simple. It's food trucks, yeah.
We're going to have another whack at this anyway.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just was, I just, I thought maybe I'd missed something, but that's what my notes said.
Right, I got to that part of your conversation and decided I wasn't prepared.
That's fine. The other thing was on page 71, this is, sometimes the difference between or and and does make a difference, and on page 71 it does. At the bottom, it highlights trunk or crown, that actually should be trunk and crown structure. Okay. Then...
That's what we get for having a tree guy.
I know.
The other thing, I guess, is more of a general comment, just to kind of know where I'm coming from, is on page 150, 115, has to do with the sign, the sign ordinance here, you told us to stay away from it, don't do anything. And I am, but I do, I'm assuming under the sign ordinance that will include billboards? Or is that not, okay, that does, okay. Again, administratively, I would like to just throw out to staff that, you know, if we go through this again with the signage, that the five-year renewal process that comes back through with every billboard that we have becomes an administrative permit versus a special use permit. And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but that's kind of my feeling, is that, and maybe what we could do is set up a set of standards, similar to what we did with the containers, that staff can just check off the boxes and say, yeah, you want it, or your light has to be changed, or, I mean, you know, we could set that up. So anyway, that just, I'm on my soapbox. The, then the last one, the last one is on page 249. This is under the Trail Section, or Trailhead Section, excuse me. So in there, the Trailhead Section starts at 246, but what I'm talking about is on page 249, there are details in the, in the document that go from page 249 to 257, and I am suggesting that...
They're all removed.
Well, we, as I understood it, we just removed the landscape ones, not...
No, you'll see a strikeout.
Okay, that's fine.
There's a strikeout.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My question to the commissioners, are you ready to make a motion?
No.
Nope? Okay.
Page 268.
Woo!
And then I'm ready.
Okay.
It's the one about the speed bumps.
The ongelations.
The roller coaster and hip-dip patterns are not allowed. We have Ash, we have roller coasters at Ash Canyon in Ormsby.
Right, and you just suggested limiting the height of buildings, but we're not going to tell the Ormsby House to take the top stories down. So, so we, actually, we talked about this, I should let Stephen Talk speak to it, but in the conversation that you had on the 16th, you observed that there were certain conditions, roadway conditions in the city that existed that the code would not allow today. And I don't think the amending the development standards is a direction to staff to rebuild roads that exist.
Okay. Got you. I'm happy.
My question to commissioners, are you ready for a motion, or do we want to go ahead and recess this before we have our next meeting?
I'd like us to get, if we could, before the five o'clock break, get through development standards, that would be big.
I'm done with development standards.
Ma'am Chair, if I can just advise what I think I heard, and what I think I heard from this, from this commission, is that you're recommending to the Board of Supervisors adoption of the development standards as presented to you in the packet on the 16th with the following modifications. The modifications outlined in Stephen Potte's memo dated September 24, 2004, with a modification to 15.12A, I'm sorry, 15.1.1A. To clarify, it's the applicant's engineer's cost estimate, and subject to the items in the Community Development's Director's Memo of September 24th with a modification to number 15, that the maximum height of the buildings along Carson Street would be limited to three stories or 36 feet, I'm sorry, four stories or 47 feet. Along Curry would be three stories or 36 feet. Along Stewart and Plaza, four stories or 47 feet. And in the case of Carson, Stewart, and Plaza, there would be a step back after the third story. And in the case of Curry, a step back after the second story. In the downtown mixed-use zoning district, the building height could be increased from those amounts, subject to a special use permit. And a modification to page 70, that the, I mean, page 71, as outlined by Commissioner Cron, that the or becomes an and.
And I think we need to also include Rick Perry's in there, and I'd like to take...
Well, Rick Perry's is in there, except for the...
Yeah, except for his, his, the third one, I guess.
The thing, that's the open space thing, I think that's going to be Title 18, not 18 Appendix.
That's where I was thinking we should go.
All right, then.
And then I'd like to make a clarification, that the four stories be 48 feet rather than 47, because 47 is too difficult to develop. And, yeah.
And Chapter 18 on the communications.
No, because we're not, we're only on 18 Appendix right now.
Okay.
Okay, and, great. Are we ready to take that as a motion?
Well, how do we do this? We do, can we do it in pieces?
Well, I think what you can do is if you want to do the motion as I outlined with the correction, that the four stories is 48 feet and not 47 feet, I think I put that on the record specifically, so it's on the record, so you can certainly have a motion consistent with recommending the development standards as outlined by the Community Development Director, and then there can be a second if I captured your thoughts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
She's joking, right?
Pay attention over there.
No, no. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I made the motion, and Commissioner Cron seconded.
Yes. Okay. And, did that, Commissioner Brooks?
I was an aye.
Okay, terrific. Then it's unanimous.
Ma'am Chair, I'm going to suggest we put a bookmark in this item, so you can get on with your other business, and then we'll, we'll come back to this item. But since the people who are involved in the next couple of items are present, I'd like to just make an announcement, if I may. We've had a situation where somebody is watching our agendas and sending erroneous invoices to our applicants, asking our applicants to wire money. We will never ask anybody to wire money. So if any applicants who are present today receive an email seemingly from a member of staff, it will not be from a member of staff, it's fraudulent, asking you to wire money, that's a fraudulent email, please don't wire money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are we going to do a quick recess? Yeah, we'd like to do a quick recess until 10 after 5, please.
Yay. Well done.
Reconvene the Planning Commission for September 25th. And going on to meeting item number 7A, LU 2024-0306 for possible action discussion and possible action regarding an application for a special use permit, SUP to allow for the installation of a paint booth to be located within an existing building on property zone light industrial LI located at 1572 College Parkway, assessors number APN 00812415. And I do need to make a statement here. I did see that the applicant of, that signed as the building owner is actually, signed as Rochelle Lalo, and she's with Select Group. I also am with Select Group, so NRS 281A-42 requires me to disclose a voting, a conflict of interest in a state from voting if I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I'm a commercial real estate agent and I represent, I work for Caldwell Banker Select Real Estate and leasing and selling of their property. The applicant is, is the applicant for this item, although I'm not involved with the property management division of Select Real Estate Group. I believe it would, and have no interest in its operation. I believe that a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected by this ongoing business relationship and, oh, no, I've got the wrong one, Ben. I do not believe that I have a disqualifying conflict and I will be voting on this matter. Thank you. Alrighty, Heather.
Good evening. So before the, this evening is a request to establish a cabinet paint booth within the existing Wisdom Audio Building. They leased the entire space at 1572 College Parkway. And so with the floor plan here on the top left-hand side, I kind of highlighted where that paint booth is going to go. It's within the four walls and roof of the building, fully contained inside. And the applicant has provided some details and such for the proposed paint booth that's going to be contained in there. The reason this triggers a special use permit is because it's most closely related to like an auto paint booth, which our code requires a special use permit for. So in this case, it, we aligned this with that type of use and a special use permit is required. So I do have the applicant present who is able to answer questions on how the paint booth functions in terms of air quality, odors, things like that. Staff was able to make all of the necessary findings noting that these are designed to be environmentally friendly and self-contained. And staff is recommending approval and the applicant is available for questions at the appropriate time.
Great. Can the applicant come forward, please? Hi, I'd like you to just push the little green button to the current screen.
There we go.
And have you read the conditions?
Yes, I have.
Okay, do you want to tell us a little bit about your company, or?
Wisdom Audio is a manufacturer of home theater speakers, high-quality.
Talking to the, okay, thanks.
High-quality home theater speakers. And we manufacture, we're a business-to-business manufacturer. And I guess over the last four years, we've learned one thing, it's that we really need to bring processes in-house. And the paint booth is one of those items.
Thank you. And Commissioner Borders, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Yeah. What typical, what typically kind of paint do you use?
We're using exclusively a water-based paint.
Okay.
We're using an airless sprayer with a water-based paint.
Is there, is there odor?
There's no odor.
Okay, that was my only concern about the paint booth is, because typically we ask, or we have a condition about odor. And I didn't know, I, I noticed it wasn't here. Water-based paint's not going to smell, so.
Yeah, we're, we're just painting wood boxes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Cron.
Yeah, it, it looks to me like the, the paint booth is, is, looks like it's assembled on-site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then are you, are you going to do that in-house, or is that going to be done by a contractor?
No, we do the assembly in-house. It arrives as a kit.
Okay.
And then we assemble it, we put in all the filters, contractors to take care of the exhaust. And then we will also be dropping sprinkler heads inside it.
A question for Heather, is it, will these plans have to go to the fire department? From just a procedural standpoint?
So any improvements to the property would require a building permit and would need to comply with the building and fire codes. So in a tenant improvement case, including something like this, it would go through the building division and then get routed out to the appropriate folks, including fire.
Okay, so then that, then as the owner of the business, you would come in and pick up the permit? Or does the contractor have to?
Typically, where it's not an owner builder for a residence, it's a contractor, but whatever the building division rules are, they'll need to comply with that.
That's fine. And so, sir, once again, just a question back to you. Explain to me a little bit more, I'm going to follow up on what Commissioner Borders said, explain to me a little bit more about how this paint booth worked being inside a building and you're not venting to the outside, is that correct?
We are venting to the outside.
Oh, you are?
We are venting to the outside, but there are filters on the large doors on the inlet side. There's a large chamber in the back where the exhaust fan is, and then there's some very fine filters that filter the air before, before it's evacuated.
Okay, no, I just was, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on.
Thank you. Terrific. And now I have to ask if the public would like, have any public comment, seeing none. Okay, and can I take a, any discussion with commissioners? Commissioner Borders?
Motion.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Lloyd to do a motion for me here.
Okay.
Ask you to do the hard ones. I didn't mean it that way.
I, I move to approve LU-2024-0306 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, second by Commissioner DeChristopher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks, you, have you, are you an A or an A?
He said aye.
I was an, an aye.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't hear well, so, okay, then it passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is item number 7B, LU 2024-0309 for possible action discussion and possible action regarding an application for a special use permit, SUP to establish a childcare facility within a 1,670 square foot portion of a 45,909 square foot building on property zone general commercial GC located at 4,600 Snyder Avenue, assessors parcel number APN 00916707. Heather.
So before you this evening is a request for a childcare facility on the northeast corner of the existing essentially bowling alley building. And with that, the applicant provided some photos that are in the application. And what I did is just added a couple of arrows here to show where the business operations would be conducted. So first is the childcare business entrance has their own entrance off of the north side of the building. And then if you had driven by the site, there is already an existing enclosed fenced area that was previously used as the outdoor play area for the childcare facility. So, and speaking with the applicant, there's not been another tenant here since 2020 when the other business shut down. So a lot of the improvements are already ready for them to move in, and they're not proposing any changes to the outside play area nor the interior floor plan. So with that, staff was able to make all of the necessary findings. I did want to note that most childcare facilities that have been before you are really looking for the daytime hours of operation to serve the daytime workers. This applicant is aiming towards something a little bit different. The property is zoned general commercial, there's not immediately adjacent residences to this site, and there's large parking areas surrounding. And so what they had noted is that they'll have their standard hours of operation from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., but they are also looking to provide evening care for, for their clients, should that be something that they find a need to fulfill that niche. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the request, was able to make all of the findings, and the applicant is available at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Hi, would you like to please come forward? Please state your name and tell us about your business.
I am Jennifer Millam. So I want to bring a daycare in the area where it is definitely needed.
Bring it closer to you because our clerk report has to, has to.
We want to bring a daycare to the area where it's definitely needed. It's been, like she said, a daycare before. And we, basically, we just want to help out the parents and, you know, citizens and help them not only with like the daytime, but, you know, the parents that, you know, have to work later, like our nurses, and we do have casinos, and it's been a struggle. It's all over social media. And I have four boys, so it's one of those things that if I can put my baby in a safe place and where the standards are met, then that's what we're here to do.
Thank you. Do you have any questions to the applicant? Commissioner, Commissioner Lloyd?
This is more of a statement, but as we know, Carson City is a daycare desert, just as northern Nevada is, and we need all the daycare we can get. And thank you for looking at a creative solution to help provide that and providing it in a time that is not eight to five, Monday through Friday. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, that's a wonderful niche. Commissioner Borders?
Yes, thank you. What's the, what's the surface in the outside play area?
Um, it's, it was approved before. It's like a black, it's not asphalt, it's like a rubber.
Like a rubber padded mat of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, couldn't tell from the picture, I just.
Yeah, through childcare licensing, they came in and they will be, they make sure that we have like mats. If, if we have swings, there has to be mats underneath, there has to be something if the kid or a child were to fall. They, I mean, they go through it very fully before we're even allowed to get our license through them.
Okay, and you've applied for your license?
Yes. So our walkthrough with them will be Tuesday, and then the health inspection will also be Tuesday at nine, and then we have the fire inspection on Wednesday.
Okay. And I guess, Heather, I know that those are state licenses and they need to have those, but you, in our conditions of approval, it would seem to me like we ought to say they ought to have them in place before the COO or whatever it is.
Just by matter of practice, the health department will not sign off, the Carson City Health Department will not sign off until they have their state license in hand. And business license won't sign off on any of it until all the inspections have been done.
Okay, well, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner DeChristopher?
Hi, Jennifer. I just wanted to say yes, thank you to you and your co-owners. The going to 9:00 p.m., that definitely serves a need. I already hear people on the north end saying it's worth the trip to make use of the 9:00 p.m. One question I had after going out there, because I forgot to look, you have that play area, knowing that you're open till nine, is it your intent to utilize it even for those late, the ones on the late shift? And if so, is the appropriate lighting there?
Um, I'm not sure about lighting. We were not going to, it's only for the night. We were going to mainly stay inside and focus on, we have different themes, so we'll have like neon light night where, you know, the kids can dress up a neon. We'll have craft night, we'll have movie night, we'll have like game. So we have a bunch of different themes, and majority of them, we're going to be inside. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Brooks?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Great, invite here, public comment, please. Public comment?
Thank you very much. And, and thank you both for your ditto's, oh, I'm dittoing your, thank you for applying and thank you for making this possible, and the hours are amazing. So that's going to help a lot of people. Also, thank you, Commissioner Borders, for bringing up the outside materials. We just heard at the supervisors' meeting with the health connect with the human health services, Dr. Lyon mentioned that there was a high, youngster with high level of lead, and when they traced it back, it was to the astrid, or the artificial turf and the tire crumb rubber was the, the bad guy in that. So they traced it back to that. So I was going to suggest that they avoid that for their outside playground, and that solid plastic or rubber type deal seems to be less of an issue as far as that goes. So I appreciate your consideration on that, and I appreciate them. Thank you very much, and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, do you agree to the conditions of use as outlined?
Yes, of course.
Great, thank you. And may I have a, a motion, please? Commissioner Cron?
I would.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Yes, I move to approve the special use permit case number LU-2024-0309 based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approvals contained in the staff report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, it was an aye, I'm sure it was an aye. So it passes unanimously. Thank you, and good luck with your business.
Perfect, thank you.
If you go forward, please, with item number 7C, LU 2024-0313 for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit, SUP for an outside storage, enclosed personal storage on property located within the Lampa Ranch North Pacific Plan Area and Zone General Commercial GC SPA and Public Regional PR SPA located on the west side of Airport Road, South of Budai at 556 Airport Road, assessors parcel number APN 01004176. Heather.
All right, good evening. Heather Manzo, again, for the record. So this is a request that the Planning Commission has seen a few times over the last five or six years. The applicant, in the most recent action, had received a time extension, which expired in July of 2024. However, they had come in for building permit applications for both the site improvements and all of the buildings. But the way that our conditions read is you have to have shovels in the ground to satisfy this special use permit. So they are at the finish line essentially with the building permits. They cannot get them pulled to get started without the special use permit being active. So at this time, that's why they're before you, is to get that special use permit in hand so they can then pay their fees, pull permits and get going. And you may note, so what the applicant did is provided all of the previous decision letters that showed, I think, 22 conditions at one point in time. I wanted to explain why we're down to five at this point. Essentially, a lot of the conditions that were originally approved in 2019 included code requirements. And as a matter of practice, we have stopped conditioning code because when we do that, applicants, commissioners, board members think that those can be modified in some way, where they can't. It's, it's code, and so they're required to meet those requirements. And then you'll see condition number five, which speaks to an actual specific building permit number. Typically, we don't do that, but in this case, they're literally, they satisfied all of the conditions for design and everything like that with this ENG permit number. And so because they're so close to the finish line on this, we referred to that so that we all know that the previous conditions that were in place in terms of landscaping and screening and things like that have all been addressed. And that's what's before you this evening. So staff was able to make all of the necessary findings for this request and is recommending approval. I didn't receive any public comments on this item and the applicant is here to speak with you. Thank you.
Can the applicant come forward, please? Just pull up another chair, it's absolutely great, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dominic Gonzalez. I'm with Lepre Reconstruction in Sparks, the general contractor on the project, and I'm with Bruce and to make use of the nine PM. One question I had after going out there because I forgot to look. You have that play area. Knowing that you're open till nine, is it your intent to utilize it even for those late, the ones on the late shift? And if so, is the appropriate lighting there?
I'm not sure about lighting. We were not going to, it's only for the night. We were going to mainly stay inside and focus on, we have different themes. So, we'll have like neon light night where, you know, the kids can dress up a neon. We'll have craft night. We'll have movie night. We'll have like game. So, we have a bunch of different themes and majority of them, we're going to be inside.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Brooks?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Great. Invite here. Public comment, please. Public comment?
Diddy French, for the record, thank you very much. And, and, and thank you both for your ditto's. Oh, I'm dittoing your, thank you for applying and thank you for making this possible and the hours are amazing. So, that's going to help a lot of people. Also, thank you, Commissioner Borders, for bringing up the outside materials. We just heard at the supervisors meeting with the health connect with the human health services, Dr. Lyon mentioned that there was a high youngster with high level of lead. And when they traced it back, it was to the astrid or the artificial turf and the tire crumb rubber was the, the bad guy in that. So, they traced it back to that. So, I was going to suggest that they avoid that for their outside playground and that solid plastic or rubber type deal seems to be less of an issue as far as that goes. So, I appreciate your consideration on that and I appreciate them. Thank you very much. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, do you agree to the conditions of uses outlined?
Yes, of course.
Great. Thank you. And may I have a, a motion, please? Commissioner Cron?
Okay. All right. Yes, I move to approve the special use permit case number LU dash two zero two four dash oh, or zero three, zero nine, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approvals contained in the staff report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. It was an aye. I'm sure it was an aye. So, it passes unanimously. Thank you and good luck with your business.
Perfect. Thank you.
Let's go forward, please, with item number seven C, LU twenty twenty four dash zero three one three for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit, SUP for an outside storage, enclosed personal storage or property located within the Lompah Ranch North Pacific Plan Area and Zone, General Commercial GC SPA and Public Regional PR SPA located on the west side of Airport Road, South of Budai at five five six Airport Road, assessors parcel number APN zero one zero zero four one seven six.
All right. Good evening. Heather Manzo, again, for the record. So, this is a request that the Planning Commission has seen a few times over the last five or six years. The applicant, in the most recent action, had received a time extension which expired in July of 2024. However, they had come in for building permit applications for both the site improvements and all of the buildings. But the way that our conditions read is you have to have shovels in the ground to satisfy this special use permit. So, they are at the finish line essentially with the building permits. They cannot get them pulled to get started without the special use permit being active. So, at this time, that's why they're before you is to get that special use permit in hand so they can then pay their fees, pull permits and get going. And you may note, so what the applicant did is provided all of the previous decision letters that showed, I think, twenty-two conditions at one point in time. I wanted to explain why we're down to five at this point. Essentially, a lot of the conditions that were originally approved in 2019 included code requirements. And as a matter of practice, we have stopped conditioning code because when we do that, applicants, commissioners, board members think that those can be modified in some way where they can't. It's, it's code and so they're required to meet those requirements. And then you'll see condition number five, which speaks to an actual specific building permit number. Typically, we don't do that, but in this case, they're literally, they satisfied all of the conditions for design and everything like that with this ENG permit number. And so, because they're so close to the finish line on this, we referred to that so that we all know that the previous conditions that were in place in terms of landscaping and screening and things like that have all been addressed. And that's what's before you this evening. So, staff was able to make all of the necessary findings for this request and is recommending approval. I didn't receive any public comments on this item and the applicant is here to speak with you. Thank you.
Can the applicant come forward, please? Just pull up another chair. It's absolutely great, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dominic Gonzalez. I'm with Leprey Construction and Sparks, the general contractor on the project, and I'm with Bruce and Melinda, the owners. I can speak to anything in regards to the timeline and the building permits and the reason for requests. And the owners are here to answer anything else that you guys may have.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Lloyd?
This is a question, I think, more for Heather. Did the, did the special use permit expire and then they came back? Or did they realize that was going to expire because they didn't have the shovels in the ground and then start working with staff? So, when the applicant came forward, the most recent time with a request for an extension, there was some discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about how the commission didn't want to see them come back for another extension. So, I think they kind of mentally noted, like, let's just wait until we know we're ready to go. And so, they, they let it expire knowing they'd have to come back and see you for a new special use permit.
Okay. Commissioner Borders?
As, as I recall this, one of the, one of the items that was of a lot of discussion in the original SUP was the, the storage units and whether or not the, the CMU wall, which was the back of the storage units, would qualify as, as fencing. And af- after many cycles of that, I think we decided that it would be fine. But is all of that in this engineering document? I guess, I guess my biggest concern is, and I understand taking out code things, but there were other things in those twenty-two conditions of approval. If they're all in this document, I don't have a problem with it. If there's not one of them in there, then I'd like to know which one it is. And, and I guess that's kind of where I am.
Absolutely. That's a great question. And yes, absolutely. They had gotten the original request approved that required fencing for screening. They came back like six months after the original approval and got that clarification in terms of using the decorative CMU walls as part of their screening instead of having a, a double layer there of screening. So, what we do when we're looking at a building permit is staff will go through and read through the conditions of approval and check off everything that's been met, provide comments on things that aren't being satisfied and get the revisions finalized to where they're, all of the conditions have been satisfied. So, we were at that point with this permit where all the conditions have been satisfied and we were just literally at, at the stage where it's expired.
Okay. Commissioner Cron?
Again, probably a question for Heather. Can you talk to the split zoning, the, the general commercial and PR split zoning, please?
Yeah. So, the way that the description reads is it explains kind of where a use is allowed in one of the zoning districts, but not the other. An applicant can make a request to conform to one of the zoning districts that's on the site. So, I did put in a colored zoning map because it's easier to discuss with, with the colors before you. So, most of the property is zoned general commercial and there's a small sliver kind of adjacent to Airport Road that is zoned PR. And I do not have the history of when that zoning was in place, but looking at how this is arranged, I almost wonder if it was where Airport Road landed, where maybe it wasn't in place at that time and, and got oriented a little bit further to the east of where maybe it had been anticipated before. But in any event, the way to address situations like this is either, A, to do a zone change to make the whole property one zoning district, or we do have that provision in code, which is what the applicant has chosen to do to move forward that special use permit to allow a use allowed in one of the zones across the whole property.
With the split zoning that you have here, is this going to be a problem for the applicant in the future?
I know. Once the site's developed, there's not really any potential impact to them.
And then I know this is a part of the North Lompah Plan. How does that, how does this particular project and on the east side fit into the larger Lompah Plan?
So, finding number one speaks to conformance with the master plan and the Lompah Ranch North Specific Plan is contained within the Carson City Master Plan. So, there are some standards. There's actually quite a few for Lompah in that specific plan handbook document. So, when we look at a building permit application or even an entitlement, we compare notes in terms of what's required for this site, which happens to be identified in the land plan as a commercial site. We compare notes for the specific plan regulations for development in this area. And some of the differences between the specific plan and, say, general commercial zoning outside of the specific plan have to do with landscape requirements. And there's also some requirements for parking lot design and placement of parking islands and things like that. So, we did review for conformance with the specific plan as part of the project.
I do have, I do need to note the Commissioner Brooks has left the meeting.
Oh, okay. The other thing, this is for the applicant. I figured since you did make the trip down here, I would at least, maybe not even so much have a question, but just, in looking at the renderings, I, I like the different uses of the materials. I think it's going to look very, actually, very nice. So, thank you and kudos to the, to the con, to your design team. I think it looks, I think it'll be a very nice looking project.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to make a statement, too, is that we did not approve one, I think it was last month. And one of the things that makes this one different is there is actually a manager's office that will, and it will be regulated when people come in and out, correct?
Correct.
So, that makes a big, a big difference on an unmanned storage area. So, any further questions of the commissioners? Seeing none, may I call for a public comment, please?
Diddy French, Carson City, thank you. And thank you, Chair, for bringing that up because those differences did make a huge difference. My concern is that area has a lot of wetland and I want that as preserved as possible and such. And not having a high rise there, I think, really helps me on airport to be able to appreciate the area around there better. And so, I thank you and I, and I wish you the best on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And you have read the conditions. I mean, now we're right on the third time. Okay, great. And you agree? All right. May I please have a motion, a motion, please? Commissioner DeChristopher?
I move to approve LU dash two zero two four dash zero three one three based on findings and subject to conditions of approval contained in staff report.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck. Looking forward to seeing it built. No, because I think there was two of us on here that said, no, 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 don't come back. All right. Okay. Now, we would like to go back to item number six A.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, we can either go through Title eighteen or we can do the table permitted uses. In your binders, in your packet, what we did for the table permitted uses was updated based on the input of the sixteen. So, that might be something that's quick to go through if you'd like to do that or if you want to tackle Title eighteen and then save the table permitted uses. I leave that to you.
Okay. Yeah, because I have some questions on the table permitted uses. Do any of the commissioners want to go first? I'll go first.
Yeah, I got to find it.
On page number three, where we add at the bed and breakfast?
Which zoning district are you looking at?
Commercial, industrial districts used tables. Page number three.
Yes.
Okay. I'm not seeing that one is, is allowed in the downtown mixed use.
No, the bed and breakfast, it is allowed in downtown mixed use. It's not allowed in RC.
Okay. So, that just needs to be moved, moved over, correct?
Well, no, I think we want it to be allowed in downtown mixed use. So, the question would be, do you want to add it to RC as well?
I would like to.
Okay.
I'd kind of like to. I'm sorry, we're on page three is where we are?
Of the commercial and industrial district use table.
Page three, okay. Bed and breakfast you're talking about?
So, we're talking about allowing it in residential office, downtown mixed use and RC, correct?
No, I thought we were just looking at the RC. I didn't know we were looking at the RO as well.
No, I'm not. It, it shows in RO.
No, I'd not seen that. Oh, you're looking at the historic district. Look at the one from today. That guy is in today's packet. In today's packet, you have a bed and breakfast in and then a bed and breakfast in within the historic district.
This is what I'm looking at.
At the bottom, it should say Planning Commission input September sixteen, twenty twenty four clean. At the bottom?
No.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
It says commercial, industrial districts. That's my S that I just put in there because I thought it needs to go into downtown mixed use.
It's allowed in downtown mixed use, the bed breakfast.
It doesn't show the S on the...
No, it says P.
No, it doesn't say P either. Not for the one in the historic district.
No. Oh, in the historic district. Okay. I see. Because it's already allowed in, it's already allowed in downtown mixed use. I see. So, what would you like it to say?
Well, because see, the thing is, is it's allowed in all of the different areas. I think this is the thing that's kind of, kind of confusing. I think in some ways, can we just combine these two and then it's a special use in the RO? Because if it's allowed in GC, it should be allowed in RC.
Okay. Well, we can make RC a P and we can just make it, and we can eliminate where it says only within the historic district. And do you want to go special use permit in RO or P in RO?
In RO, I think it should actually be, I think we need to actually go the special use permit. The reason I'm saying is because the fact is, is that it's residential too and they, we want to know what's going on in their neighborhood.
Okay. And we'll eliminate where it says bed and breakfast in only within the historic district. We'll eliminate that row? Okay.
Okay. And then a question on business operating continuity between eight PM and six AM or on a twenty-four hour basis in the tourist commercial? We only have a couple of tourist commercial and I didn't know they were twenty-four hour operations.
Well, just saying, if we had a request like that in tourist commercial, it would be permitted.
Okay. And then on, under commercial, industrial districts used tables, page number ten?
Yes. Okay.
Under restaurant, no drive-through, what is the little three for?
Let me see. We're supposed to get rid of those. My guess is what it's going to say, well, that's no drive-through. I have no idea. I wanted to get rid of all the footnotes. So, I'll get rid of that.
And then under retail sales, under tourist commercial, which, what is ASP?
It should just be P. The AS is probably leftover.
And I had a question under pu- public use district tables. And I know it's kind of off on this, but something was brought to my attention this week is the, I'm sorry, this is just kind of ambiguous. This is page one of the public districts used tables. My question is, is the Mountain Street Old Carson Medical Group property, what is that zoned as? The reason I'm asking...
I don't believe it's public, but I, I feel like it might be like RO, but I can't promise you. I don't know.
Okay. My concern is, is that particular piece of property is going up for auction and it's on auction right now and it's to be sold within the next forty days. Do we have a designation for that?
Yes, there's going to be, that definitely has a land use designation and a zoning designation. I just don't know off the top of my head what those designations are. But I don't believe it's P because P tends to be reserved for publicly owned properties. And we've been cleaning up the Ps for the last couple of years.
Okay. Just, I just wondered what was going on with that property and whether or not, because it is, it is, it doesn't conform with anything on that street. So...
No, I, I hear you. Yeah.
Okay. Those are the only things that I had to mark on those. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Cron?
Go back to page one. It's a more of a philosophical question, Hope. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Agricultural zone and conservation reserve zone. Page one. It's more of a philosophical question, I guess, than anything else. You have the utility substation being a special use permit in both agricultural and conservation reserve. But I just keep thinking that if I'm living in one of those zones and all of a sudden, out of the blue, a municipal well facility shows up or a flood control, big hole in the ground shows up with a big flood control facility or a water tank shows up, it would have been nice to know a little bit ahead of time. So, should it be a special use permit versus the utility substation? That's just, it's a philosophical question.
In my experience, the municipal well facilities around town are very understated. They're small buildings and they're, they're very, we have one right on, met Darren Anderson out there. What street was that, Darren? On the west side, like Orem's Bay? Orem's Bay, like that's, it's just, to me, the, and, and it's whatever the Planning Commission thinks, but the well facilities are just very, they're very small. They're quiet. There's not a lot going on. A utility substation, it's, it's very close to an industrial type use from an appearance perspective. And I just think that the, the impact of a, of a municipal well facility versus a utility substation are just very different. A water storage facility is a water tank. It's pretty passive, pretty, you can, you can disguise it. But you know, your point's well taken. So, if, if you feel like it should be something different, I'm open.
Well, I was just wondering what the commission felt on that. It was just something philosophically. It said, well, if it was utility substation needed a special use permit, some of these other things which are, and Hope, you make a good point. The city, I know, really tries both with their wells to, you know, to, to color match those to the natural environment. You know, they also design their well facilities architecturally pleasing. I think because of one over at Long Ranch. So, I mean, they really make an effort to do that. But I'm just thinking more from a property owner perspective, all of a sudden, you have these things in your backyard. So, whatever the commission wants to do, I just wanted to philosophically bring that up.
Commissioner Borders?
Well, to answer Commissioner Cron's question first, I think of a utility substation as, you know, twenty-four thousand bolt power lines coming into a whole bunch of transformers and having it all stepped down into two twenty and twenty-four hundred. And, you know, it hums and it whistles and it smells bad and all that. I can understand why you'd want a special use permit for that. The others, I just, I don't think fall into that category. So, my, my only, my only comment on, on this document is on page two and page twelve, or page eleven, I think. Commercial and industrial. All right. Well, they're the same. We got auto parts, tires and accessories. Okay. And on page eleven, we have tire sales, repairs and mounting.
Which page?
Eleven. 11. Tire Sales, Repair and Mounting. One of them's Les Schwab and the other one's, you know, the three brothers or whoever selling car parts, Napa. It would seem to me they ought to be in the same district. I can sell, I can sell tires and accessories, you know, in, in neighborhood business, which I don't think we ought to be able to do, and RC. I think Tire Sales, Repair and Mounting ought to be able to be in RC. And I think we ought to remove a special use permit for neighborhood business. I don't know anybody who wants a tire change in place next door to them.
Sorry. Maybe we keep Tire Sales, Repair and Mounting and add a permitted use under RC and we eliminate automobile parts, tires and accessories?
That would be wonderful.
And I'd like to go back to Commissioner Cron's question about the wells. I, I just remember that when we did add the generators to the wells, we did get quite a bit of public comment on there because they were concerned about the noise and so forth on Ormsby. We also had, I think, one out off of Riverview? And, yeah, and I think that, I think that it was interesting to see how many people came forward because they were concerned about the decibels. And it actually, I'm gonna wear kind of a different hat, I actually think it was kind of good for the, for the citizens to realize that those were for emergency purposes primarily and that there would be testing, but I think it eliminated a lot of fear. So, I mean, I, I kind of, of the thing saying that, yeah, let's go ahead and put the special use permit on that so people know what's going on. I think the other one is the retention basins. Because I think that when people, I realize the retention basins are going to be primarily done through engineering. However, I think that some retention basins are kind of scary. If you look at the one behind the college that fills up with water and you have no idea how deep that one is, that's kind of imposing as to the retention basin that's down at the bottom of Highway 50 and 395 that I've never seen any water in, but boy, if it filled up, it'd be scary. But I think that's, I think again, that's something that affects people. And I think that, that they would like to know kind of what's going on. So I don't know, I would like to see those be, remain a special use permit so that it's more open and transparent to the, to the neighborhoods. Any further discussion? That was easy.
Well, but it's only, it's only in, what are we talking about, just two? We're not talking about in residential area, we're just talking out of...
We're talking out in wherever, but people still want to know. I mean, when they go out in these open spaces and they see these things and they want to know why somebody's on the open space and why they're doing this, or even if they're, like the ones that are over on the airport area where they're expanding those, I mean, those are, those are things that people want to know about. Why is this happening? Why is this grading happening? You know, are these things gonna go ahead and, and even on the conservation areas, that, that one area where the well is on Ormsby is not a really conservation area, but it's already marked as public. Okay, Commissioner DeChristopher?
Probably inappropriate time to ask this, I hope. This won't be the last time we have this discussion. We make our recommendations to the Board. I know there'll be more discussion then. And as we further develop the master plan update, I'm sure even more discussion will come up. So just to be certain, this isn't the last opportunity. As we do the master plan update, other revisions could occur.
You're partially correct. I don't want to just say you're 100% correct. So you're making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors tonight. So you're getting ready to hand this document over to the Board of Supervisors. Then you're gonna resume work on the master plan. The master plan will likely be adopted in March 2025. And once that's adopted, you will then start reviewing Title 18 again because you'll need to implement the master plan. So as we've talked about, for example, the zoning designations will likely change because the master plan designations are changing. So yes, you will see it again, but it will be about six months out.
Commissioner Cron?
Yeah, Hope, on, I guess we need to finish that conversation about before I move on to other table parts.
Are we, are we saying that we want to take the item that says Municipal Well Facility and make it a special use permit?
I'm, I'm saying so because the thing is, is just for, for, just for transparency, because these are the wells, these are usually municipal facilities where the public is, is seeing it. So that's what I'm just saying, is, is that actually, I think that's the word that actually changes it, is the word municipal. It's not a regular well facility.
I don't care.
You don't care?
Make it a special use permit.
Okay. How's the rest of the commissioners feel on that one? It's not a hill you want to die on?
The other thing you could consider is an administrative permit. That means it goes to the hearings officer. The findings are the same as a special use permit and the neighbors are notified.
Okay. I could work with that, just as long as the neighbors are notified?
So, so to be clear, we're talking the flood control facility, the water storage facility and the municipal well facility, all as administrative permits, correct?
Water storage, yeah.
And I was just going to state, yes, I appreciate what Chairman Preston was saying about special use to provide transparency, but I also get concerned, I like the administrative approval.
Me too.
Because at the end of the day, it's gonna happen. So I just, I, I mean, those type of items, I don't know if a special use permit would actually influence where they go.
No, I was just concerned about having transparency primarily with the public so that they're notified and they go, I just, why did this happen in my neighborhood? And I wasn't notified, which we hear, so. Yeah, I agree to go ahead and change those three to administrative. How's the Commission feel on that, Commissioner Cron?
Yeah, oh no, I'm perfectly happy with that solution. I think that's a very good solution.
I think, yeah, I think we have consensus there. Okay, Commissioner Cron, did you have others?
Yeah, on, there you go. On, on Public Districts, two, page two, this might be a typo, Hope. Halfway down the page, it says Use.
Yeah.
It, it just says Use and it's...
I like it.
Thank you for you guys, okay. All right.
It's permitted.
And the other, other question I had, Hope, was on Public Districts, page one. Was there any particular reason why the fire station wasn't in, was actually not put in PR, Public Regional? To me, that would be a, kind of a natural place for it to land.
My guess is this is a carryover from the existing, so we can certainly add it.
Okay, all right. And then one, Madam Chair, if I can
Certainly.
continue. The, on, this has to do with Commercial and Industrial Districts, page 10. And, and the Commission has been talking about, are you there with me, Hope? Okay. The Commission has been talking about possibly having residential within the corridors of the city. You know, where you have different types of zoning. So all, now we're, now we've got special use permits for them. I'm just trying to sort that out. Is, is it with the, with the master plan changes that are coming related to land use along the corridor, how does this, when you talk about residential office, general office, neighborhood, all those, you have a, you have kind of a, some are special use permits, some are permitted, how does that change or will that change?
Right, it's what Commissioner DeChristopher's question was. So basically, what you're doing right now is updating Title 18, and honestly, the impetus of this update was, was a couple of things. To make sure the references to state law were all correct, to change the formatting, and then just look for opportunities to sort of streamline and address things that just didn't make sense. Once you're done with this document, you hand it over to the Board of Supervisors with your recommendation. You start work back, you, you start up on the master plan again. You have a meeting October 16. Once the master plan's adopted, then what you do is you return to Title 18 and you have to start amending Title 18 to implement the master plan. So you'll get there, you're just not there yet.
Sometimes, sometimes, Hope, I need to hear things twice, thank you.
I do have a question too. Is on Schools, under the Commercial Industrial District Use Tables, page 10. On the school or university is allowed in, in downtown mixed use, but school K through 12 is not?
Okay. Would you like to allow it?
I would like to add the school K through 12 to be allowed in the downtown mixed use.
Okay.
Why?
Because if we're gonna go ahead and change some of the uses of some of these buildings, what's the difference between a school K through 12 and a school, college slash university, what's the difference?
Well, first of all, I'll tell you that the school's not gonna build another school.
No, but I'm talking if they have a private school, because like there are a lot of private schools. For instance, Reno, I think we're just, they approved another one, number five on the charter.
Okay.
Is there anything else on the table of permitted uses?
No, I think that's pretty much it. Does, does the Commissioner see any others?
Would you like a motion on this one like we did the other?
Yeah, if you want, I can summarize. In terms of the table of permitted uses, the Planning Commission is recommending to the Board of Supervisors the table of permitted uses as provided to the Planning Commission at their meeting of September 24, 2024 with the following modifications. The flood, on the table regarding Agricultural Zone and Conservation Reserve Zone, the flood control, storm water protection devices will be administrative permits in the ANCR zoning districts. Municipal well facility will be an administrative permit in the ANCR zoning districts. The water storage facility will be an administrative permit in the ANCR zoning districts. On the Commercial and Industrial Districts Use Table, the used automobile parts, tires and accessories will be removed. The used bed and breakfast inn only within the Historic District will be removed. The bed and breakfast will be allowed in the RO zoning district with a special use permit. In the RC zoning district, it will be a permitted use. In the, the footnote under Restaurant, no drive-through in the Neighborhood Business zoning district will be removed. And if the reference to that footnote is necessary, it will be included in the description of the use. Under Retail Sales, it's a permitted use in the TC and the reference to the A slash S will be removed. Schools K through 12 will be a special use permit in the downtown mixed use. Tire Sales, Repair and Mounting will be a permitted use in the RC. On the Public Districts Use Table, the used, land use will be removed. And that is the scope of changes on the use table.
I'll make that motion.
I just need to amend it.
We missed the fire station. Sorry. Fire station will be a special use permit in the PR zoning district.
And I do need to amend an motion to say September 25th, not September 24th. Yes, September 25th. Okay, looking for a...
I'll still make that motion.
I figured.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes.
Title 18.
What? I'm sorry, I looked at you, I was frightened there for a minute.
By the way, this is a much better way to handle large documents than a binder.
I'm glad you liked it.
If we could do that.
The others were too big to put the binding on.
Okay. But this is very handy.
Yeah. So I do have just a couple of things on Title 20, but I can wait till we get to those page numbers if you want.
We're gonna do Title 18.
Title 18.
Please.
If you want to just go through like a handful of pages and see who has what.
And when are we gonna have to do Title 20 since you keep bringing it up? No problem.
Title 18.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On page six. We define beauty shop but not barber shop.
Because we know what barber shop is.
But does not a barber shop have a definition?
In my opinion, you only have to define terms that warrant definition. If, if a term's not defined, you use the man on the street definition.
Okay.
Now, Hope, Madam Chair, a question is that these are all definitions are all from NRS, so we can't change them, correct?
No.
No, I was just questioning whether or not there was an NRS definition for barber shop.
No, actually, they're not all from NRS. Dan Yu gave an explanation of the NRS 278020. Maybe if we give Ben a minute, he can look up what NRS 278020 says. But this is not necessarily the definition from NRS. It's a part of NRS, I think, authorizes you to define terms or something, is my recollection. So yes, if you disagree with how a term's defined, we can have that conversation.
Oh, okay.
On page 25. On open space, is, would this be the place we put the other amendment?
Actually, I reread Rich's note and I have it actually right here. And he mentioned it for subdivisions and PUDs. And so I'm thinking it's gonna be in Title 17.
Okay.
Because that's where the subdivisions and PUDs are.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Senior Deputy District Attorney Ben Johnson for the record. Just to clarify the question regarding NRS 278020. It's basically a general statement in the statute that says that the governing bodies of cities and counties are authorized and empowered to regulate and restrict the improvement of land and then control the location and soundness. So basically, it's just an authorizing or enabling statute that allows the city to regulate. So it doesn't really have anything specific regarding how words are defined.
Thank you.
I have something on page 43, if nobody has anything before then. On page 43, if we're there, at the bottom of the page. It's basically a code section that says if your application's denied, you can't apply for a year unless it's substantially different. That's basically the gist of it. But the way it's worded, it says, except as otherwise provided in the subsection, if the approval of an application that was submitted pursuant to such and such has been denied. So I think it would be cleaner to just say, except as otherwise provided in the subsection, if the action on an application that was submitted pursuant to such and such is denial, a subsequent application for the same parcel, and then the rest can stay the same.
Good catch.
Heather Manzo caught it.
Yay, Heather.
My next one is page 167, which is accessory structures, and that's where we can put the parallel language in. That was in the ADUs.
I found it. Before we go that far, could we go to 64?
I got one at 49.
All right.
249.
This has to do with the variances. In other places throughout the document, it talks about a, this talks about administratively doing these variances. In other places, it talks about appealing to the Planning Commission. I didn't see that in this particular section, that if administratively staff denies the variance, that they can appeal to the Planning Commission. I may have missed it, but I didn't know that. That happens in other portions of the document, where you can, where appealing can be brought to the camp, you know, if they disagree with.
What we can do is verify the appeal of a minor variance. Staff only has the authority to approve a minor variance. We don't have the authority to approve what's called a major variance. So, which may be why you didn't see it, but I'll verify appeal of a minor variance, and we'll read through it.
Commissioner Boarders?
On page 64. And it goes, and it goes to also to page 178, which is when we get to the historic district. But the title of 18.02.0463 says historic places and historic district improvement standard conditions of approval. And we haven't defined what those are. Are we talking about in the historic district or in general? And if it's in the historic district, why don't we put it back there with the historic district in page 178 or so?
What we can do, what you're looking at is this section of code, pretty sure it's been reworked, but it should list all the standard conditions of approval for every single discretionary review. So the, so when there's an application in the historic district that affects the exterior appearance of the property, it's a discretionary review. So we can certainly look at this title, because basically, it's going to have, it's going to be in the historic overlay zoning district, and that might be a better descriptor.
Yep.
So we can look at-
I just think, I don't have, I have a problem with what it says. I just don't think it's in the right place.
I think it is in the right place, because if we, if we're grouping all our conditions of approval in the same place, that's where we're going to expect to see it.
All right.
But I think we can clarify the title.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I'm going to take us back to page 47 for a moment.
Ooh, going backwards.
I've made this comment before, and this kind of just goes over the whole document. But instead of special use, and this could be my personal opinion, because I think that the public thinks that there's an exception that comes along with special. Specific use could be a better term that is used to define our, what we term as a S, an S U P.
This came up at your joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and at your joint meeting, you asked us to work on a different name for this. Dan Yu and I discussed this. And in discussing it, we did not bring forward a different name. And the reason we did not bring forward a different name is because a special use permit, albeit a layperson may perceive it to be something different than it really is, it's really standard land use language. The other thing is, we have a history of using that term, special use permit. And there's, there's just, we've taken a lot of actions on special use permits. And so we appreciate that there may be a perception, and a different word may be a better descriptor, but it's also pretty standard terminology in land use, and that's why we did not bring forward a different title for that.
I appreciate that explanation. Do we know, do any of the other jurisdictions in Nevada use a different term? I'm guessing the answer is no, but.
Not that I'm aware of, and even just nationally, it's a very standard term.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, Senior Deputy District Attorney Ben Johnson, for the record. Just on that point, the statute also refers to it as a special use permit. That's 278.315.
Thank you. Okay.
127. I had something at-
68.
68.
All right.
Rolling us along, which I don't mind. I'm glad we keep moving. On 68, they talk about developing a specific plan. One of the things I just want everybody to consider, it talks about a land use map, description of locations, a plan for phasing, financing plan. Would we want to add adjustment to the urban services boundary? So in other words, if you go forward with a, a specific plan area, you know, and that ends up going outside the urban service boundary, now you could cover that under, you know, and I think there's a, there's a generic statement, yeah, any other information or material included without limitation, as deemed by the director. But I just thought, since we have talked about that in the master plan, and we're using that now in the master plan, that might be a way to tie this back in here.
I think that's a really good point, but I think it's a little bit premature. We have to get the master plan adopted first, because right now, the urban service boundary doesn't exist yet. It's in a draft of the document. And we're also not certain if it goes here or under growth management. And if you're reviewing it annually, it's the Growth Management Commission.
That's, that's a very good point.
So yeah, I think we have to wait to, for the, for the master plan on that one, but it's a great point.
But Carson City does have an urban service boundary. We're just incorporating that into the master plan.
Yeah, we're putting it in the master plan, because technically, right now, you have to go to Utility Billings' website in Public Works to see the maps.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, we're back to 127.
127. The purpose of the aid district is to identify those lands that are used for cattle raising.
127.
127. We're raising cattle. Can't we raise sheep, goats, alpacas, hogs, or something else? How about livestock?
Livestock.
Bah.
Next.
159. And we'd talked about this before, and we, it may be somewhere else, Hope, but we, we're talking about exceptions with these storage containers. And I still don't see a way to, to address pods, or the U-Haul mobile storage pods, or whatever they are.
For now, let's put down here a temporary, a temporary, or less than 30 days or something.
Okay. I don't have, I don't have a problem with it.
Because I'm not, let's just, I think, let's just make a note, accommodate a pod for less than 30 days. Because I'm not sure. And I'll look at it with Heather. It may be under temporary use. I mean, it's not even a use. Under, under 30 days, I'm not sure. But we'll, we'll look at it.
This says, except as otherwise specifically authorized by the provisions of this title, the following enclosures may not be used for storage or occupied.
No, I hear you. So we'll figure out where to accommodate a pod for up to 30 days.
Okay.
Because it's clearly something temporary. I don't want to make an accommodation for something permanent.
Madam Chair, in that same venue, in the same pages, 158 to 159, just a thought, as you'll see on 158, the parking aspect of this was removed, the landscaping was repealed. I'm wondering if you just want to put this whole section into the development standards. So everything that has to do with storage containers ends up, you take it out of here, and you put it into actually the development standard, or the appendix, Title 18 appendix, like you've done with the landscaping and the parking.
Right now, today, I don't want to make that big move, because I think that's a big move. But in, it's here with accessory structures and stuff, so I think that's okay. But I hear what you're saying, it's something I think longer term we could look at. I think it's okay here. Because 1805 is just, it's an interesting section. 1805 is a bunch of supplemental standards, and you can kind of question, why are all these supplemental standards in 1805 versus the development standards? And I'm not 100% certain. I'm also looking at 2A, which says, storage containers may be used on a temporary basis and not longer. It should be then a period of 90 days and one calendar year. Does that accommodate the pod? Oh, it doesn't accommodate residential. Okay, got it. Okay. Okay. So yeah, I think your point's well taken, Commissioner Cronin. It's just, I think that would be a big lift at this point.
The last one I have, Hope, is the, on 169, and we've already talked about that, with the accessory structures.
Right. I made a note on a different page for your accessory structures. I was going with 167. That's the start.
I'm sorry, 167.
Okay, okay.
I misread it.
That's okay.
But that's where we're going to dump it.
Right, right, right.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I have a question in regards to Richard Perry's comments on this 8.3.
Right. His last comment was regarding drainage basins and erosion control associated with subdivision and PUD?
No.
No.
The 8.3 placement complies of manufactured home.
Oh, that's the same, that's the same wording.
Okay, so that's, so that's where you pulled the wording from this. I want to clarify that. Okay, great. All right. All right. Any other changes? I'm just-
Okay, then if you want, if that's the scope of it, and I actually think this is a good document. I hope you all feel that way.
Finally.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of good improvements in here. And so what you can do is make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of Title 18 as presented at the September 25th meeting, with the changes as noted on the record. And what I'll do is a detailed memo to, to the board with those changes, like the memo I did to you for the development standards, so they'll know exactly what changes you're recommending.
Okay. And I'd like to also note that this began in 2019, so it's taken us five years to get this far. So this is kind of a big deal.
I found some of Lee Plummel's original stuff.
Okay, Commissioner Cronin?
Yeah, you know, sometimes things happen for a reason, and I'm probably a little more philosophical than other commissioners up here related to this. But it has been nice to be able to not only work through 18 and the appendix alongside of a, of a master plan document.
Absolutely.
You know, so that, so maybe things happen for a reason, because it has been nice to read through this. We're going to do the master plan, and we get to come back to that. And I know that sounds like probably a government way of dealing with things. But, but the beauty of it is, is I think that you do end up with the idea of now integrating 18 and the master plan. And I think there's a real strong benefit to that. So I'm just hoping, you know, I know, I know staff has taken some meetings on this over, over, over time. But I, I think we're getting, like you said, I think we're sending on a document that I think is a good document onto the board.
I'll just mention, I believe Ben Johnson may have been the attorney assigned to us at the beginning.
He was.
So how appropriate, he sits with us this evening.
You felt you came full circle, Ben?
I'm sorry for the demotion. Madam Chair, would you like a motion?
Yes, I would.
I would like to move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the zoning text amendment, Z A 2020-0001, as presented and amended. Is that the one we want?
Yeah, you're fine. And just say specific to Title 18, and subject to the changes noted on the record.
Correct. That's what I said.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passes unanimously, but was I supposed to do public comment?
Yeah.
Oh, this is the continuation. Okay, so then, any other staff reports before I open up for public comment again?
At your next meeting, you're going to have three special use permits. You'll have College Parkway, another paint booth. No, this is what you did tonight. Okay, that's not the right one. No, no. What we're going to do is we're going to do Mackenzie's report. So this is Mackenzie's report. She's doing it every month. So we're in September, but she's giving you the August information. So in the building department, the valuation of permits in August was 18 million, a little more than $18 million. Total valuation year to date going through August was just under $200 million. We had 19 housing starts. They were all single-family residential. And through August, we've had 235 housing starts in calendar year '24. In terms of new construction permits, we issued the permit for Carl's Jr. on South Carson Street for the building remodel. Aspen Dental is going in at the former Buffalo Wild Wings. A lot of people are asking about that. That will be a show with the dental office, and I believe there's another tenant space in there. Planet Fitness, which will be going next to Sprouts by the Walmart up north. They have come in and obtained their tenant improvement permit. And Hobby Lobby, where Burlington Coat Factory was, they came in for their tenant improvements. Those permits were issued, I should say. They didn't apply, they were issued. So those permits were issued in August. In terms of business licenses, we had 78 business licenses issued in August. Some highlights are the Boys and Girls Smart Star on 710 West Fourth Street, which will be a full daycare and education, ages six months to five years. And the Golf Lodge at 4530 South Carson Street, which is an indoor golf simulator and bar. In terms of code enforcement, August, we had 97 cases opened and 123 cases closed. Let's see, for a planning commission, and you lived this, you had six items that came to the commission. One was postponed. That was a ham radio tower. You had two applications that were approved for the cannabis production and cultivation. Two applications were denied. That was the master plan text amendment over on Mark. And the tentative planned unit development for the Emerson boat and storage, or boat and RV storage. And you also considered the draft amendments to zoning ordinance. You looked at the use tables. Upcoming dates, so October 14th, I think I accidentally said 16th, but we moved it to the 14th, will be the work session on the master plan update at 10:00 a.m. at the Adams Hub. We're going to look at the draft document that you tried to look at like a month ago, but you didn't get through it, because there was so much public comment. So we're going to go through that draft document and get your input for the consultants. On October 30th will be your regular Planning Commission meeting, and Heather Manzo just handed me what you have going. Manzo just handed me what you have going. There's going to be a time extension for the casino up on North Carson, the Silver Bullet, remember the Mike Pegram one up by the Kmart building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Another, they're asking for another time extension. You'll have a congregate care facility that's over on Vista near the hospital, a model home on Ash Canyon, and a variance off of Elizabeth, which is kind of near the Governor's Mansion. So that'll be your October thirtieth meeting. On November, in November, Saturdays in November at ten AM, I'll be at the library if anybody wants to come hang out with me, and we'll talk to people about the master plan, part of the listening tour, the revival of the listening tour. On December-
Hope, before you go on real quick, the, are you planning to give any presentation or have handouts? What kind of, what are you thinking, or have, have you gotten that far about the format?
I actually haven't gotten that far, because I really just need to get through the October fourteenth meeting to see where you are, because I can't, I need to understand where you are as the steering committee. And then, once we have that, I think we can, I, I think I'm going to have to have some type of handout prepared for people, but really, it's not something you can present, you can capsulate really easily. But I'm happy to hear input from any of you.
And then, you were talking about the October fourteenth one at the Adams Hub. My understanding is that's going to be the, kind of a page-by-page-
Yes.
-approach to the document.
Very much so.
Okay.
Yes. So I'm not really sure, I haven't thought a whole lot about the master plan listening tour for November, because I want to get through October fourteenth. I think it's going to be primarily listening, being able to answer questions. I don't plan to present the master plan. Let's see, then we'll have your regular meeting is November nineteenth because of Thanksgiving, so that's a different day. December seventeenth because of Christmas, so that's going to be a different day for your regular meeting. And then, there's a joint meeting on the master plan, December nineteenth, the time to be determined. The consultants should have responded to your October fourteenth comments at that time, so you'll be going through that with the Board of Supervisors. So, that's my report.
I have a question for you that was asked of me, is that where, they've been doing like all the remodeling of the old motel over there off of, oh gosh, the one, I always knew it's a travel lodge, that-
Oh, Roundhouse?
Huh?
The Roundhouse? Is it the white one with blue trim?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's on North Carson on the west side? Yeah, and they're lawfully converting that hotel into apartments.
Okay, does that, somebody asked me if that actually goes against our growth management permits.
Yes, it does. They'll need to get growth management, and they pay into the park.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, right now, as of, here we are, you know, in September, how many permits do we have for this year still available?
We, we, oh, gosh, a lot. Probably over four hundred.
Over four hundred. So we, so we are not exceeding anything, because I think what people are seeing is they're seeing the apartments on Roop, they're seeing the stuff out on Bud-Eye, they're seeing this conversion here, they're seeing stuff going out on Silver Oak, you know, they're seeing all these different things, and saying, how many units is that truly?
Right, and we count the unit when the permit's issued, that's when they get their allocation, their growth management allocation. But take the apartments on Bud-Eye, those are under construction for a long period of time, so that could be a multi-year project, similarly with the apartments on Roop, the Anderson Ranch. All those houses aren't getting built at once, that, you know, it takes time. So, so there's a lot of construction going on, but this, it's staggered, so the start dates aren't all the same.
And I have another question too, is that on, for instance, the space that is over there off of GS Richards Parkway, that special use permit has expired, yet they're selling the development rights on that?
Where exactly on GS Richards? Which project? The apartments?
This is the one with the three, yeah, the three-
The apartments behind Glen Eagles?
Uh-huh.
That expired, there's no-
Right, it's expired, but what I'm saying is, people are selling, they're, they're marketing it as if it's still an apartment complex, project.
Oh, it didn't expire. Oh, okay.
It's not expired? I think it is.
Heather doesn't think it expired. So if it hasn't expired, they can certainly sell it as an entitled property, but as you just heard, when Dominic was here, they have to start construction before the expiration. It's not just get permits. So they absolutely have every right, if it hasn't expired, to sell it with an entitlement.
Is that what's happening at the apartments at Willow?
Where's Willow? What's happening there?
Willow is off-
No, that, there's nothing at Willow, off Cochise?
Yeah, off Cochise, where they went ahead and they did the ground, they did the terracing.
Oh, no, that is Rovatini, and, yeah, that's Clearview Ridge. Clearview Ridge got approved in like nineteen ninety-eight or something, two thousand six, okay. It was so long ago. Got approved in two thousand six, they kept asking for continuations. Finally, the Board of Supervisors said, this is it, that, don't come back, we're not continuing again. So they built it, so that's actually a subdivision of land. Those are about three thousand three five hundred square foot lots, they built the roads, they put in the infrastructure on Rovatini, and no one's come in to go vertical. The exact same thing happened over on, by Ross Gold Park.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a couple subdivisions, where they built the subdivision, put in the infrastructure, and they haven't gone vertical.
Okay, great, and Commissioner, Commissioner Borders?
Since Ben's here, we, we've finally gotten through Title eighteen, also known as Title twenty in some places. It's, it's been a long fight, and I've been very vocal, but I would like for you to pass on to Dan New and those, and the rest of your compatriots. We appreciate what they've done, and I'm glad we finally got something we can work on. And thank you guys.
Thanks, thank you.
I'll give all the credit to Dan, I'll only take a little bit, because I did sit in those early workshop meetings with Lee and Hope.
Well, I've yelled about him enough, so I probably owe him an apology, but I, I'm-
Better throw some towards Todd, too.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Cron?
Hope, I just wanted to say thank you and your staff for putting this together. That's so nice to be able to look out three months and kind of know where we're going and how we're doing, and I know what to read, when to read it, so that's always helpful.
Yeah, and I have to give credit to Mackenzie and Cecilia. They really do a fabulous job keeping us all on track, and, and they, they put that together, so credit to those ladies.
Thank you. And, yeah, public comment, come on, Denny, you're waiting, I can tell.
Denny French, one of the things I'd really like to encourage is eighteen point zero one point one seven three, NRS two seven eight zero two zero. I hate doing that, but the main thing is, is it's suggesting that there are areas that we should have as conservation and wildlife sanctuaries. And I don't see preserving land under that zoning or under that title enough. When we have an opportunity with land to change a trajectory of what it's going to have on it, that we are ignoring that that should be one of the things that could be on it. It could be a bus stop, it could be a train station, it can be a, a multi-level parking, whatever, but it, it should have a space in our considerations when we have land that we consider open land, because open hand, land has no protection once utilities get there. It can become anything you all decide. And such like that, you really have to designate, because it will be gone, open land won't be available. Those areas that I think should be areas that wildlife would have as a transient stopover, if nothing else, during their regular migrations. And the insects, believe it or not, they do migrate. They may migrate from this part of the hill to the next because the bloom's coming up someplace, or the food sources have changed, just in that one little bit of terrain. But they do actually take flight, and they do have to crawl, and they do have to get there. And so big spaces of roads, like on Prison Hill, disturb that comfort level for them, they're going to look elsewhere, because they can't go up, because they'll get run over by something, or get burnt up because of the heat's too much for them to cross. If you stand and watch a caterpillar cross the street, as I have, that's no bigger than an inch, they move a lot faster than you would expect. They've got a child's book out called Go With A Snail, or Move Like A Snail, and I'm going, kids couldn't even keep up with some of those snails, they really book along. But the thing is, they still need time, and they still need an environment that doesn't cook them before they get across. And if we don't start really making places into set sanctuaries like this particular section in your Title eighteen's, you won't have them. They've got to be considered, like you've got to have so many gas stations, you've got to have so many hotels where you think you need this many pot shops, you know, you've got to consider them as a necessity, not just a, oh, that's a pleasure, like our parks, we're so blessed, then we ought to give them enough staff and enough money to run them properly. So I'm saying, please, consider them as a real necessity, just as we do need housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn.
Okay, second, Commissioner Lloyd? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, aye.
Thank you.